All right, we are right at seven o'clock, so I'll call tonight's meeting to order. And Jaleen, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Erickson.
Here.
Councilmember Hosnick.
Here.
Councilmember Valento.
Here.
Councilmember Roberts.
Here.
Mayor Bain.
Here. I'd like to invite everyone to rise and join us with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Council, we have an agenda before you. I will entertain a motion to approve or any changes.
Don't move.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, and our agenda is approved. Next item this evening, very exciting night, we have oath of office for our new captain, two new sergeants, and an officer, and Chief Peterson will get us started.
Mayor, city council members, colleagues, family, and friends, good evening. It is a great honor for me to introduce you to four outstanding members of our police department who will be sworn in tonight, taking the law enforcement oath of office. All four officers have varying degrees of rank within our department and a wide range of years of service. As you know, we have had more changes in our organization in the past six months than we have had in over a decade. Succession planning is key to the success of a law enforcement agency, and the Forestlake Police Department is no different. We have had two retirements since the beginning of the year with a captain and a sergeant. Between the two of them, they have a combined 64 years of law enforcement experience. To fill those vacancies, we have appointed a new captain, promoted two new sergeants, and have hired a new police officer in the past three months. The law enforcement oath of honor is a solemn pledge that a law enforcement officer, or I'm sorry, the law enforcement oath of office is a solemn pledge that a law enforcement officer makes to uphold the Constitution, the laws, and the public trust. The badge that a police officer wears is a symbol of the power and responsibility of the officer. I will be introducing each officer separately in order for them to recite the oath of office independently and have an individual or individuals of their choice pin the badge onto their uniform. First, I would like to invite Captain Luke Hanegraff to the front of the room with a family member. Captain Hanegraff obtained his Bachelor of Arts degree from the University of Minnesota Duluth, his Master's of Arts degree from St. Mary's University, Minnesota. He is a graduate of the Northwestern School of Police and Command and has over 20 years of experience in law enforcement in various assignments and ranks of supervision, along with a vast array of training. Captain Hanegraff was appointed to captain on February 3, 2024. He is the second-in-command for the police department and is the acting police chief in my absence. He proudly wears the same badge number as his father did when he worked here from 1979 to 2009. Mayor Bain, if you would do the honor of swearing in Captain Luke Hanegraff.
I, Luke Hanegraff, do solemn swear.
I, Luke Hanegraff, do solemn swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of captain. Within and for the city of Forestlake and the state of Minnesota.
Within the city of Forestlake and the state of Minnesota.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next, I would like to invite Sergeant John Glatter up to the front of the room. Sergeant Glatter has worked with the Forestlake Police Department since 2005. He has worked as a patrol officer, school resource officer, field training instructor, firearms instructor, use-of-force instructor, TZD coordinator, bike patrol coordinator, mobile field force member, and obtained his Bachelor of Arts degree and his Master's degree from St. Mary's University, Minnesota. Sergeant Glatter was promoted to sergeant on February 17, 2024, and is currently assigned as detective sergeant within the detective division. Mayor Bain, if you would do the honor of swearing in Sergeant John Glatter.
I, John Glatter, do solemn swear.
I, John Glatter, do solemn swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of sergeant.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of sergeant.
Within and for the city of Forestlake and the state of Minnesota.
Within and for the city of Forestlake and the state of Minnesota.
Next, I would like to have Sergeant Nick Kent come up to the front of the room. Sergeant Kent has worked with the Forestlake Police Department since 2006. He has worked as a patrol officer, canine officer with his canine partner Ranger. He was a narcotics detective, field training instructor, firearms instructor, and a use-of-force instructor. Sergeant Kent was promoted to sergeant on March 16, 2024. He is currently assigned to the patrol division as a patrol sergeant. Mayor Bain.
Please, Sergeant Nick Kent, if you have to make. I, Nick Kent, do solemn swear.
I, Nick Kent, do solemn swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of sergeant.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of sergeant.
Within the city of Forestlake and the state of Minnesota.
Within the city of Forestlake and the state of Minnesota.
Last, I would like to invite Officer Zach Basil up to the front of the room. Officer Basil has over six years of experience as a sheriff's deputy with the Washington County Sheriff's Office and with the Shisago County Sheriff's Office. He was hired by the Forestlake Police Department on February 3, 2024. He completed his field training on April 1, 2024, and has been on solo patrol, assigned to the patrol division. Mayor Bain, if you can do the honors of swearing in Zach Basil.
Recording in progress.
Please, raise your hand and repeat after me. I, Zach Basil, do solemn swear.
I, Zach Basil, do solemn swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of police officer.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of police officer.
Within and for the city of Forestlake and the state of Minnesota.
Within and for the city of Forestlake and the state of Minnesota.
Everyone, please welcome, or join me in welcoming Captain Hanegraff, Captain Glatter, geez, Captain Hanegraff, Officer Glatter, geez. Yeah, too many rings going on here. There you go. Captain Hanegraff, Sergeant Glatter, Sergeant Kent, and Officer Basil. Mayor Bain, if you don't mind, if we can take just a couple of minutes so we can get, we're gonna have people go upstairs to the community room for some refreshments. Thank you so much.
You're all welcome to stay. Congratulations.
All right, then, next item on our agenda is open forum. Open forum is any interested party's opportunity to address counsel on any topic of your choosing. If you have been following counsel, you will note that we have had fairly active back-and-forth dialogue that is part of our workshop discussions, but I also thought it prudent to just point out that open forum is an item that's on every single agenda, but during that open forum portion, we typically don't have a back-and-forth conversation with counsel. If you have a topic that requires that level of engagement, I would encourage you to talk to either myself or staff about getting onto a workshop agenda so that we're able to have that conversation. Just want to make that clear, that we're happy to welcome public comment at every single meeting. This is the place for you to, again, anything that, any topic that is of your choosing, but if you're looking to have some engagement with counsel, we need a little, we need a little bit of a prep and a little bit of additional information before we enter into that conversation. So just want to set that as, again, we've had some very good discussions in those workshop topics, but that is a, that is a format that is best designed for a workshop, not necessarily a regular meeting like we're having tonight. So that said, is there anybody that is signed up for open forum this evening? One other note, I will note that we do have a public hearing on the agenda for item 8A, which is consideration of the zoning ordinance, so if you're here to talk about that, we will be opening up a public hearing for that, and you're welcome to provide comment either now or during that public hearing portion. Anybody signed up for open forum?
Mayor Bain, we don't have anyone signed up, and I don't see anyone online indicating they wish to speak during open forum.
Okay, thank you. With that, we will close open forum and bring the agenda back to counsel. Counsel, for your consideration tonight are consent agenda items 7A through 7J. I will entertain a motion or any changes.
Madam Mayor, I need to pause consent agenda item 7C.
Very good. Is there a motion for the other consent agenda items?
Don't move.
We have a motion for approval of consent agenda items 7A, B, and then D through J. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, motion carries, and then we will go back to item 7C for specific consideration, that is to approve the meeting minutes of April 8, 2024, and I would move that counsel approve those meeting minutes. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We'll take a motion, and then a second from Councilmember Valento. Any discussion on this item? Hearing none. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, abstain, one abstention. Okay, we will move into our regular agenda now, and first, for consideration is agenda item 8A, which includes that public hearing for consideration of ordinance 736 and ordinance repealing and replacing Title 15 land usage, Chapter 153 zoning code, Resolution 4222407 for summary publication, and Abby.
Thank you, Mayor Bain, members of the council. For a little over a year now, we have been discussing potential changes to the zoning code. We've been communicating with you and the Planning Commission about the cumbersome nature of our zoning code. As we've become more familiar with it, myself and staff, we realize that it's more difficult to just kind of do really easy changes in our code, and so we hired MSA Professional Services to do an independent investigation of our code and provide some professional recommendations for how to make our zoning code more clear, more concise, and easier to use for the general public, for staff, for you. As part of this process and their recommendations, it's a multi-step process, and tonight would be the first step in this process. The intent of tonight's ordinance before you is a full repeal and replace of the zoning code, but there are no substantial change, there's no changes to any of the words in the code. The intent of tonight's ordinance is to restructure the formatting of the code, or we've been calling it kind of the code's architecture. So for example, we would have landscaping in one section, and then, you know, two chapters later, or two sections later, we talk about landscaping. We're pulling all of that appropriate things together and really making it easier for us to read as we go through and really look at what are the regulations that are important, worth keeping, what needs to be updated. It really pulls together the most-used stuff to the beginning of the code. So you, as an average homeowner, you might wonder, what's my zoning district? You figure out your zoning district, you open up the code, it's right there, whereas right now, it's at the end. It reduces the number of sections from 18 to six, really condensing it into like subsections. The Planning Commission did hold a hearing on this at their April 10 meeting. They do recommend approval of the ordinance amendment. Staff in our findings has noted that any zoning text amendment, we have to see that it's consistent with the comprehensive plan, the zoning code, and that there's a general public benefit, as noted in our findings. This ordinance really is designed to create a more workable document. It's really designed to make it free-flowing, a little more free-flowing, and easier to understand and use. This is in the public's best interest, and given the fact that there's no textual changes tonight, staff would also recommend you move to approve both ordinance number 736, which actually amends the code, and then Resolution 04242407, which is a summary publication. And tonight, Claire Stickler with MSA Professional Services is here to give you just a high-level presentation, just a brief idea of all of the findings they've had, kind of where we're going from here, so.
Perfect. Claire, welcome.
Thank you, good evening. I'll first apologize by putting a 292-page ordinance in your packet this evening, but as Abby mentioned, it is, hopefully, it is in the city's best interest, developers, residents alike, to run through these, go through these kind of architectural, structural changes. Okay, perfect. So as Abby said, my name is Claire Stickler. I'm a planner with MSA Professional Services. We started this process with Abby and Ken in December, November, and have been working through what the layout of your existing code is. As Abby mentioned, 18 subsections, we'll call it, within title, the articles, many of which can feasibly live in other sections, therefore preventing some of that jumping around that she said is occurring, making it really difficult for not even professional staff who have experience working and living in codes, but your everyday residents and developers that are interested in living here, building here. So really, want to hone in on the no-text changes. The biggest text changes actually is we're incorporating a use table, comprehensive use table, that will have all of your zoning districts on the top, and then all of the uses on the side with corresponding conditional use permits. COCs not permitted, if it's blank, it's not permitted, and that was included in your packets this evening, and I can switch over to that briefly as well, just to kind of run through kind of how this was developed. This is a really, we can, this will be condensed if needed to fit onto a page, it's 11 by 17 currently, but it is color-coded so that it associates with your zoning code colors as well, again, for that ease of public use. Now, when this gets published, should the council adopt it this evening, the color likely won't be able to comprehend in American legal, where you are hosting your code, but staff can have this on hand for residents, you know, PDF versions, paper copies, et cetera. American legal have it more so out like this with, it can still be broken out in the general categories, industrial waste management, utilities, transportation, with kind of the sliding bar on the side. So it won't show up like this on your online code, it will be, it'll have the scroll bar for residents, but with the amount of districts and uses that the city currently has in the code, it was a little bit tricky getting it condensed down into this format, but staff was comfortable with having the districts as the more abbreviated version rather than spelled out, you know, mixed-use residential one, et cetera, so on and so forth. So this is the only text addition, but it's not adding, this is already in your code, written out word for word, we're just making a graphical, user-friendly document in addition to those written out in your district regulations. So this will kind of be first in the layout of the code, and then it'll go into the district regulations as currently listed. But really, the biggest changes are taking what your existing outline is, the 18, or titles, we'll call them, sections, incorporating them into the six subsections, and the italicized subsections here were ones that were previously their own, that can live and really fit better under, the biggest change being general development regulations, as landscaping is our favorite option to use, because I think it's referenced three to four different times in all of the different subsections. Off-street parking is a similar situation, and so is lighting, making those simple site development reviews much more difficult, and what really do you need to be doing on the property. So taking 18 to six, as well as, there was 237 reserved sections in your code for future use. Now, amendments are inevitable, and it's important to keep that breakage in there, so this time we've incorporated about six to eight per subsection for, you know, some larger ones for your district regulations, your general development, ones you're seeing amendments occur more often, but your general provisions, unless there's a state law change or some sort of more substantive change, you're not probably going to have an amendment in addition to what's existing there, it's going to be striking out and replacing language likely. So that is really how we landed on this six revised code architectures, six sections. All of those are still living as a title of a subsection, so lighting regulations is still broken out under general development with all of the corresponding code being the exact same language. The numbers are changing a little bit, we've provided the chart of what the old number and the new number is. Any existing applications currently processing through the city, all of that, you know, nothing is non-conforming with that, it's just the old reference code should this pass this evening. And other than that, I don't really have a, Abby gave a great overview. I don't have too much else to add unless, but I'm happy to answer additional questions.
Thank you. Counsel, what questions might we have for either Claire or Abby this evening? Any questions?
Couple thoughts, I mean, I know you highlighted no-text changes, is there any unintended consequences that we should be worried about with this change?
I don't foresee any, given that there are no text changes, it literally is a reformatting of the code, unless there was somebody out there that was just kind of so married to, you know, specific sections and knew that code number, but the number will change, the law is still the same. This has been vetted with legal, legal is in support of the redesign. It really paces us, puts us in a better position to be able to go through and really start analyzing what, what needs updating, because there's quite a bit that we know, but as Claire had mentioned, you know, I bring up landscaping often, when you, when we're having to look in three to four different places to explain to somebody what those laws are, it's just really inefficient, and so unintended consequences, I'm not sure there are any, because there are no law changes that are happening right now, other than the format number.
Thank you.
That was my concern, too, looking at 300 pages of.
Yeah. Well, and we, I mean, we, when we first started talking with MSA, we really started to kind of look like, okay, well, we could do this, and we could kind of do this, but it, and we still may need to kind of cherry pick how we go about updating these laws in the future, but doing it in the structure and the environment that it was in right now, just, it, it just made it next to impossible to even kind of wrap our minds around updating this document.
Is this the first time we've had, like, the graphical, I think this is the first time I've seen that type of a graph? I've, I've heard reference to the need for something, but it's great to see that visual and picture paints a thousand words, and this is still a lot of words, but it's, it's just, I applaud whoever put that together, I think that's a lot of work, so well done and much needed.
Should I show them the Monopoly example? I have it on the PowerPoint.
I think you have to.
Okay, so I, this is a, when we brought this forward to the Planning Commission, something that I like to utilize when working through zoning codes is use it, you know, okay, so Monopoly, when it was first out, this is how the directions were written, just like how zoning codes are. Super, I mean, if you want to read through, that's great, that's awesome, most people these days know how to play, but this is how it's on the box now. So this is what we're seeing trends in many cities of what you're looking for, we'll call it like a two-page spread. So you have the use table at the beginning, but then when you get down to your district standards, you have kind of, and I have it back here, a diagram, so a sample of, this is the building footprint, this is your minimum setbacks, and then below it, here's how it can, here's the wording of it, but we can have a little bit of a visual reference, because these days, your codes, although Forestlake is still building out, some stuff is existing in field development, and so you want it to work within your existing built environment as well. So that's the Monopoly example.
Just to follow up on Claire's comment, these would be things that we'll consider in our next steps, is how we can make this even more user-friendly. Right now, there's a lot of words in our documents, and so just trying to condense them as best as we can is probably that next step in figuring out how can we reduce the, and eliminate redundancies, streamline it, easy for everybody to understand.
I think I saw in the memo that this passed unanimously at the Planning Commission, is that correct as well?
That is correct.
Okay. Counsel, any other questions or points of conversation? I'm happy to entertain, should we, I'm happy to entertain a motion on, on any topic, just for review, if we want to bundle these together or do two separate motions for consideration.
We do have a public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry, let's, thank you.
Good, yes.
I will forget, let's open up that public hearing, is there anybody this evening that would like to speak on this topic? If so, you're welcome to join at the podium, and with, now we'll open the public hearing. And if you are online and would like to speak in the public hearing, please raise your hand so that we can unmute you and bring you in. We'll keep public hearing open for just a moment. We'll keep public hearing open for just a moment. Anyone like to speak in the public hearing? Anyone online, Julie? Nobody online?
No, ma'am.
Not seeing anyone come forward. We will close the public hearing, bring back for counsel. And with that, counsel, for your consideration tonight are two items, ordinance 736 and resolution 4222407.
I'll make a motion that we adopt public, or excuse me, the ordinance 736 and ordinance replacing or repealing Title 15, land usage.
There is a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? And motion carries. And now, follow-up to this is resolution 4222407. I would move that counsel approve the resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
We'll take a second from Councilmember Erickson. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? And motion carries. Okay, our next item this evening is item 8B, and Ryan, let me just get back to my agenda. 8B is consideration Eureka Avenue Improvement Project Proposed Layout. And Ryan, whenever you're ready.
There we go. All right, Mayor, Mayor City Council, tonight, we're going to go through the Eureka Avenue improvements presentation. This is generally the same presentation that was given at the public open house Monday, with the exception, we have added a slide to address one of the specific comments that we received in order for you guys to see, I know some of you guys were kind of listening in for a little bit, but you had some other meetings going on too. And tonight's, really, what we're looking for is the city council to approve the general layout of the project, more else related to the construction limits. Everything within those limits could possibly change between now and when we actually work through the permitting with the DNR, but we can't change those construction limits. And I'll get into more depth on why we probably wouldn't want to do that anyways, even depending, we don't know exactly what's going to go in the middle of everything right now. So with this PowerPoint, we'll go over the existing conditions, project objectives, agency partners, the funding, the design process that has been completed to date, the proposed design, other design considerations taken to account moving forward, and the project timeline, and then wrap it up with any questions. The existing conditions out there, obviously, we have a very restricted roadway, a lot of safety issues, poor pavement, pavement's generally 22 to 24 feet in width, adjacent to the lake and many wetlands, a lot of right-of-way constraints, and we have DNR property within the roadway itself currently now. Very narrow parking areas, unsafe for pedestrians. We've heard a lot about the safety out there, a lot of existing shoreline fishing going on out there, and then from the Lake Association, Watershead District, we've had a lot of conversations with the lakeshore erosion. Project objectives that were established prior to kind of going into the grant bonding bill request, we wanted to reconstruct the degraded roadway, provide pedestrian facilities, improve safety, minimize environmental impacts, restore eroding shoreline, and maintain shore fishing access. Some of the project partners that have been involved in the project to date, with support from the city of Columbus, Rice Creek Watershed District has been very involved, Washington Conservation District, Minnesota Department of Natural Resources, the DNR, and Minnesota Department of Transportation. Funding for the project, the city received 4.5 million legislative earmark grants. That's administered by MinDOT State Aid and the State Aid Design Standards that would be required within the project. To spend the funds, the grant deadline is December 31, 2027. In discussions with Rice Creek Watershed District, there is a potential on some funding from Rice Creek Watershed District, whether that's financially in dollars or if it's design assistance or that way through the project. Also, we've been working closely with the DNR on a potential DNR funding for a fishing pier. If you recall originally, just so we're understanding everything, that was submitted in the original request, but they considered that an ineligible item. But another group within the DNR has identified this area as an area they would like to have these types of facilities, and it's one of their higher, on their prioritized list. So we were working with them too, and where that could possibly be located. That would probably, that would be a separate project, but it could, still could go on at the same time as ours, depending on how they move along in the project. Should note though, after it's been installed, it would become city infrastructure owned and maintained by the city if we agreed to the project. But they would pay 100% of anything to get it to final and approved construction and installation, so. So the design process for the Eureka Avenue, analyzed six preliminary options. Goal was try to maximize the street and pedestrian facility width while minimizing environmental impacts. Reviewed preferred options with all the agency partners, DNR, you know, we want early buy-in because the process, we go from here. If we have to go back and forth, that would add considerable amount of time to the project and money. So we wanted to really work hard at the beginning and get them to have a supported design too. And then the public inputs that we've had, and obviously we'll have additional public inputs once we get through some of the future DNR permitting requirements. And then really get to the permitting, the DNR road easement application. That's the big thing. Just for reference, you know, with one of the listations we had, listation 25T, we had to go through the same process with just electrical conduit power to the new lift station. That's why all that lift station stuff's still sitting there. Remember, we changed order out of the project. We still maximize the bonding bill money into the overall project, but until they approve just the nativity easements, you know, we're going for a road easement in there, so that's, you can kind of understand the timeline we're dealing with in their process. Here's generally the proposed location. Obviously, I think we've talked a lot about this already, so hopefully nothing, this is a surprise, but we're going all the way up to the County Road 32 or 11th Avenue, and then we would stop at the city limits on the south end. We have been working closely with Columbus, and they've been chasing funding too, to incorporate that little remaining section to be incorporated into our project at the same time. They did participate for their share to have the surveying and wetland donation and field work done, so they're, you know, they're ready with, you know, if they keep moving forward too, so they wouldn't have to be starting from scratch and could piggyback the project. Typical section that's proposed in the project right now is 24-foot wide pavements with curb and gutter on one side of the roadway. We wouldn't be adding any additional storm sewer inlets other than one spot to catch some drainage. That way, we can minimize any new storm sewer that's going to be installed in the project, but we are planning on replacing culverts and stuff in the area. This would be a full reconstruct road, and that's why I provided some pictures at the bottom of the typical section, just to understand that when we do build this road, it will get shut down, but, you know, it'll be a faster, means of construction, there'd just be nowhere to shift traffic and having to put the geotextile fabric on the subgrade. Subgrade is where we excavate everything down to and build our road back up. In that middle slide up there, you can see generally everywhere in Forest Lake, other than like Forest Hills Preserve where we did that development, we had some sand out there. And then up in the very northwest part of the city, there's some sand there, but otherwise, we're kind of dealing with really poor soils and clays. That's why we install the geotextile fabrics, all the subdivisions will have that too, just to separate the poor soils from your imported granular material. So during the freeze-dow cycles, they stay separated. But with that, you got to dig down, and you can kind of see what it, generally, some of the stuff would be dealing with construction. And with curb and gutter on one side of the road, obviously, we're not going to have curb on both sides like the picture, but what I'm trying to show you there is, you got to install the curb after you build the road back up, and you're going to have to let it keer, and then before you can come and grade around it, because it's going to be very tender and soft, so. Just want to give you some background of some of the construction we're working with. Obviously, this would be a moving train, it could go pretty fast. Obviously, there's an important driveway to a private roadway neighborhood, that's where we would, you know, strategically stage how we work around that and coordinate that entrance and exit during the construction, and the boat launch as well too. This is a slide that we added specifically to talk about you guys tonight. Obviously, no final decision needs to be made on this, because again, we're going back and talking about the overall footprints, layout of the project, not what's all the nuts and bolts inside yet. But a lot of residents talked about they wanted a guardrail along the curb and gutter area to separate the travel lanes with the vehicles and the pedestrians with the trail. Of the options we've walked through, we still would pave up to the back of the curb, and you could get about just a little, just under nine feet in width, about 8.62 feet it was, that's going to be paved. So regardless of what we do do behind the curb, we still would pave that pathway up to the back of the curb, just for uniform construction and make everything fit. But then, you know, it was also discussed at the meeting that if we added those, we don't know if we could even fit our, a guardrail and a trail together. It, I mean, it's going to be tight, so this is what this is representing. Obviously, a preferred pedestrian access route is six feet or larger, you know, our standard sidewalk in our residential neighborhoods nowadays is six feet in width, trails are 10 feet. Funding requirements would require a minimum of five feet in width, and if you can see the middle slide with the red guardrail, that red is representing what a guardrail installation would look like and what distance we would have left. So off the back of that guardrail to the edge of that trail, we'd have just hair over five feet in width. Now, there's, you know, some pros that come with that, you know, from the public's perspective is we can then protect children from traffic, eliminate winter access in that area that the guardrails installed. But there really are some cons to think about moving forward. Obviously, we're going to reduce the pedestrian facility width, and we just, we can't kid ourselves. We know kids are going to sit and play on that guardrail when it's there. I think we've all played on guardrails, you know, back in our day. I certainly have, especially around lakes, but that's something that would seriously have to be discussed and moving forward, and I don't want to take that one lightly. You know, they're going to say, oh, no, you know, that would never happen, but I just, that's, that's something for kids to climb on. You know, when there's a tree in a park, what, or, you know, they just do. Obviously, it's going to introduce a new roadside hazard. It would make snow plowing a nightmare and maintenance for public works. I don't know how they would plow that, would it probably have to be a different type of equipment they would have to purchase because that, the width is so narrow and we can't get too far off over this way because we would be, you know, tearing up turf and right by the lake, and that's the last thing we want to continually deal with that. But as I talked about, how we would have that trail paved to the back of the curb before you would install any type of a guardrail system, you would do that because otherwise you're going to get erosion and sediments moving around if it was just left gravel underneath that area. You could never get any grass to grow right underneath that small area, just with all the salts and all the snow plowing from the road. So you still would pave it, but over time, that pavement's going to break up and crack and, you know, and then going to require hand patching to get that trail solid back underneath that guardrail, so that's something we can spend more time and give you some more examples of what something like that would look like in two, five, 10 years down the road, and what public works would have to deal on that side of thing. And then it is an increased cost. I mean, it's easily $100,000 for the steel guardrail, it would be more for a wire. We just did some quick distance estimates. It would have to have in-treatments too on both ends, so a lot that just goes into it. So I just want to bring up some of those points now and early. Again, we don't, no decisions are being made on that or anything being finalized. This is hard to probably see in the PowerPoint, but this is, one of the areas I got is very tight, and what do you do with the line on the road and how we had to work through some of that. Obviously, you can't push it east because then you'd be building into the lake, and then there's some very, a lot of wetlands on the west side of the road, and how we balance the alternative design that we have chosen to minimize those impacts as much as possible through this corridor. After completing the geotechnical work with Brown InterTech, the areas that we are pushing out and doing some of the widening because of the trail being added to the project, there's very poor soils, and we looked at a number of different ways to deal with those. Schedule-wise, cost-wise, the most economic is going to be surcharging those areas. Basically, that means we're going to import material and let it sit in those areas of the yellow for duration of time, six months to eight months is about, kind of the window we're looking at to let this, to consolidate the soils in that area. Otherwise, if we tried chasing the material, you'd go a lot really, really deep, but being next to a lake and wetlands, you're not going to have a lot of stability in what's still left out there, or now you got to bring in all this extra shoring. So the costs just kept going up and up, and then even the chance of losing the lake into a trench, right? So we didn't want to, you keep going down that one, you know, you get to a point, it just doesn't make sense anymore. Looked at geo, geofoams, other lightweight fills, but from a cost standpoint and schedule, surcharging is leading the way pretty easily. Other components in this project that are going to occur, a lot of you guys might not know, but on that north end, lift station 25T, that serves all the houses on the north side of Clear Lake, so basically all their sewer goes east to west of the lift station up by the north side of that DNR boat launch area. And then there's a forest main under Eureka, and then it cuts through the wetland area, then comes back to that private road at Everton, is that Everton, Dave? So that's all being funded with the project and replaced. That's original forest main, so that's a good component to get repaired with this project. It'll be all brand-new pipe. And again, just to not, to deal with the water table and chasing that in an open trench, that'll be directionally drilled. It'll be easy to drill that. It's a smaller pipe than your normal gravity mainline going down the middle of the road, so that'll be easily to install directionally drilling that. And that machine on the bottom left is a typical machine that would do that. Basically, it'll just push it, you know, through underneath at the elevations that we need. And then when we get to certain spots or where we turn corners, that's where we will actually open a trench to make, make the turns and then the connections. Storm sewer will be replaced where there's corrugated metal pipe. There is some reinforced concrete pipe out there already. We don't plan on removing and replacing those, those are in good condition. But anyway, we've got that corrugated metal pipe, definitely, you know, those last, depending on what type of pipe you had, 15 to 25 years, so we want to take care of that stuff now with this type of project. So we would replace that, the city-standard reinforced concrete pipe. Another component that was important to the project early on was maintaining or identifying areas that we could provide on-street parking. So there's two bump-out areas. The bigger area is on this, a little further on the south end that had, I believe it was 12 spots, and then on the north end, we got four. And the DNR was pretty adamant about not putting any spots close to their DNR launch and overflowing that area with fishing and overflow those. So that's where we worked, where we could identify some of those areas to the south, but really, it was hard to add anything down the north end anyways, just because of the We've had a lot of discussion with shoreline restoration, anything from soil lifts along the trail. Because of the trail, we got, you know, some sort of a drop-off, but we don't also want to just make it all rock along the entire shoreline, and that's what you're left with in aesthetics. So we've been working with Rice Creek Watershed District and some of our staff on identifying some of those vegetated riprap areas, some limestone slab overlooks where you could get out and do some fishing, you know, that would purposely direct certain locations for people to have fishing, and then, you know, working with the DNR, that future potential ADA fishing pier. These are just some of the pictures of some of the stuff. They were a lot easier to see on the boards at the open house, but some of the enhancements that we'd be looking at, in the bottom right are some of those limestone slab overlooks that you could step down and then, you know, fish from those. So picture that too, you know, and see how it's getting away from the trench. So picture that too, you know, and see how it's getting away from the trail. So like if you're out there actually really fishing, you're already gaining some distance from that roadway that we talked about. There were some of the safety concerns brought up from some of the residents. And it wouldn't be fishing from the trail, right? There's going to be that other area for people to get down and closer to fish, so. Other design considerations in the project and surrounding area. You know, we, just to recap, you know, we know MinDOT's Highway 97 improvements is planned for 2025 and 26. Obviously, some of their stuff will carry into 27 to just punch lists and restoration growth in that. Washington County, County State Highway 32 or 11th Avenue. That project is moving to 2027 based on the MinDOT's schedule that's proposed for 25, 26. And then other construction staging detours, there's a lot of other stuff that's going on around here. And we'll hear a little more about Highway 8 tonight with the second presentation too, so. Other design considerations that might just be brought forward between now and actually you guys would approve plans, a long, long way away from that. But potential for prohibiting large truck traffic, posting as like a no truck, truck routes. That will be some of the discussions we'll continue to pursue. And another thing, obviously, as we heard out there is the speed limits and what, do a review of posted speed limit that would be legal and enforceable with the project. Project timeline, what we're looking at. If we're on board with tonight's of what we heard and seen at the public open houses and everything that we worked through, basically, the next step would then be to start working with the DNR and the easement acquisition. With the schedule and the amenities that are the obstacles we have to work around, we are looking at a 26 construction at this point. So just because of the surcharge would start in 25. And then hopefully have everything done and punch lists approved in 27. Next step, as I talked about, you know, tonight, approve the project layouts, begin the DNR road acquisition process, also begin permitting process and start working towards the final design and then future public open houses. And then determine, you know, the truck stuff and the speed limit that we previously talked about. Just kind of hit quickly on budget wise, everything that we've now discovered within the project or heard, if we did put it on paper, worst can say, worst case scenario, we're actually over the 4.5. Just under 4.9 million. That's obviously is our, including, you know, the guardrail in there. It's including $200,000 for wetland replacements, which that was, that's the wetland that we're impacting. It would equal 200,000 if we had to go purchase it today. We are hopeful that we are going to get fully funded through the road replacement program. But until we actually submit a real application in our project, we won't know. But we've had a lot of discussion and have worked through a lot of that. So hopefully that could come off. But that's something we won't know until you get in there and see what credits they got, right? This also does include a feature, a rectangular rapid flashing beacon crosswalk on the south end where we, the trail goes from Columbus's west side to the east side of the road. That's where you push the button, the yellow push buttons. If that's a feature that's wanted in that project, that's estimated about 30,000. We got, with the power poles that are along the road, there's two that are impacted and would have to be moved and relocated. And, you know, if this was a traditional city right of way, you know, they're there by franchise agreements and they would have to move upon our requests as long as they would execute like a permit within a year or two. But they're actually in their own easements area. So they kind of own that rights and we're asking them to do something within their rights. So that would be a responsibility of the project. And then some of the, the areas with the steepness coming off the edge of the trail, there's some retain walls that are being proposed within the project and then the surcharging estimates. We're, hopefully, we're conservative on that, but until we get more information exactly from Braun AirTech on what that height of that material and duration of time, it's a little hard to estimate the final estimates on that. But if we were to take the wetland replacement in the guardrail project or the items out of the project right now, our estimate would come down to 4.55. So we're right there, right, with our bid. So that's just stuff to think about where we stand today. You know, you got your wish list or the things you've heard and you just threw it all right there. That's, you know, so we know what we're going into or, and we also know where we can get easily with a couple of decisions, so. So with that, I'll just open up with any questions you might have.
Thank you, Ryan. Counsel, open it up. Any questions you might have?
Big project and it needs to be done. That's about all we can say about it.
I don't think anybody argues that one.
No.
What, do we have any, we have, do we have guardrails on any city streets now that we can kind of point to as successes or challenges? Are there any?
I don't think so.
This would be first. Yeah.
We got a couple of wood split railing fences off the back of a trail because of that grant required it. But is it effective now?
No.
You hit that, your power going over, you know, especially us as adults, it's going to hit us right in the waist, right?
It was definitely a loud voice in the neighborhood meeting. I wish I had the example in mind during that time to challenge on, you provide a structure for kids to play on, they will play on it. And I didn't think of it in the meeting because I do think that is a strong consideration. And then just the plowing and the maintenance and all of the stuff that goes into that. What, when you did, so you did though incorporate into the plan some level of guardrail. Can you point to the, the length of section? I can't imagine it's the entire portion.
We kind of just looked right in here where the pinch point between the lake. A thousand feet in that area is what's
A thousand feet.
We estimated, you know, that would kind of cover that area, that, that concern. But the trail is proposed on the back of the curb, the entire length too, right? So. I mean, we, we're not, that's not a decision that needs to be made tonight. We got time to have that, continue that conversation. Obviously, that you guys are aware of that point. Now's the time to see if, you know, when you're driving around places and you see, see something like that, take a picture of it, right? I'm sure we could Google to and find a picture right now, but a real life situation would be good to see that.
The other, the other point that, if you, could you pull up the cross-section again with the guardrail? I just want to kind of show the illustration of what the experience would be. So there's curb, right? And what is the, what is the distance between that curb and the pedestrian trails essentially? It's the same surface, right? There is no barrier. But then we would, without a guardrail, we're still talking about six and a half feet of trail, correct?
Yep. So from the face of the curb to the back of the trail is eight point six two feet. So that's what that is, right? You take that area and you still got a walking area that's, we would have the six point six two feet in width. I mean, it's a little wider there, but if you add that guardrail from the back of that guardrail to the edge of the trail, you got that post that are in the back, sticking out of the back of the guardrail, you would have five point three seven feet.
Do we have, so you, you also mentioned the number of parking spots that are, are designed along the street. Do we have an idea on, on a busy day, how many cars roughly are kind of creating their own parking spaces? Like, do we know what that volume looks like?
It fluctuates greatly and season with, because as the season goes on, like lily pads and the weeds get really thick down in that corner. And so you start losing some of that area that you could fish in right now just because of the vegetation growth. I mean, every time you throw it out, you're going to get a snag, right? So you've got to work your way further up north to get better, better grade out to the lake. That's obviously where that fishing pier is going to come in handy someday. But I, I drive through and look at that all the time and it varies all the time. And, you know, some, some mornings, there's quite a few cars there and then there's, there's none. It's, I don't, I just don't, there's no consistency to it. If it's a really nice night, no wind, I've seen them lined all the way.
Oh, yeah.
Right, yeah.
And they were shoulder to shoulder the other day. Everyone drove by there.
Yeah. And then, yeah, I'm, I, I suspect we're going to hear again, a fair amount of advocating for guardrails. And I appreciate it comes from a really good place, but I, I'm, I'm nervous on the increase on cost and also, you now have something for cars to run into. And so I, I am challenged. And I think that's something we're going to have to just think about is, you know, we don't need to decide tonight, but how important is that?
Well, some of the other design, the things we bring up, you know, speed limits. Do we restrict certain types of vehicles? You know, that's, it's a public road. You guys have the ability to do some of that to a degree. But then it's going to come down to enforcing, right? I mean, you can post all the signs you want, but if we don't have some extraordinary authority out there, that they're just going to, going to do what they, they would do. But I, I, when I thought about that specific slide and, you know, I, I know the kids will sit on the guardrail. I know they'll try to walk on the top of a guardrail. They'll try to, it's a balance beam, right? It's a toy. It's not catching fish for the day. You know, and it's a very tight corridor. If we want that trail, we don't have much more wiggle room. There is no more wiggle room. And from where we started to get to and, I mean, this is, you know, no way would they allow a city standard road to go through here.
From, from a design standpoint, is there going to be anything stopping people from parking on the west side of the road?
There will be no parking allowed on the west side. There's no room. It'll be a two-foot shoulder and then it goes down, down to the wetland, down to the ditch. Because, think about driving it now and you can see where a lot of that drainage ditch is. The entire footprint of the project is getting pushed to the west because the trail is getting fit in there. We can't build into the lake, so.
Yes, I, I appreciate the concern about the needing a guardrail. I also appreciate your team looking at that and coming back with some, you know, pros and cons to that and hearing them out. I think if you, you do this, you can justify a lot of other places in the city that you might need a guardrail. So keep in the conversation, but that seems to be a tough one to try to accommodate.
One other piece of feedback I heard during that meeting that I was surprised at was the volume, the feedback on volume of large trucks. Do we have a substantiated sense on that? On, is it enough of an issue that we should consider limiting large trucks or is it a growing issue? Do we have a sense? I think from a, that's not intended to be a truck thoroughfare. And so I think there should, it would make good sense. And if that adds to the safety, I just don't know how much of a problem it is.
I would say it's a perception right now because I don't have the facts to say otherwise. Obviously, we do traffic counts on that road through the state aid process. This is one of the roads that gets counted, but it doesn't distinguish between what type of vehicles are driving down it. We'd have to, you know, put, spend some time out there and do a visual inspection of documentation right now of what's driving that. I think you could get a good baseline on a weekly basis and identify what users, guests, the concrete, trucks are probably using it. But then there's been some things that are changing fairly in our, our ways, such as the Ford site developments. That was a trucking operation before. A lot of semis coming in and out of that parking lots. Those have gone away and now we've got a Ford dealership, right? So, so things have changed since we've even talked, since where we're standing tonight than they were two years ago, right? And if somebody had a perception that all these trucks were two years ago doing this, it, you know, it certainly could be different just with some observation, watching the traffic and during the week.
Counsel, any other questions, comments? And just for clarification, suggested action tonight or requested action tonight is to approve the project layout, is that?
Or kind of just give a formal nod to move forward with the permitting with the DNR. I mean, we're not, just want to make it clear, we're not approving any construction plans or specifications tonight. We're basically giving that formal nod approval to move forward. So if we are going to start moving forward with the DNR and, you know, once we get everything submitted to them, we're in for a year-long process with them. If that footprint were to change or get bigger, that's where we'd have to start over.
All right, I'm open for a motion if anyone's ready.
Well, if no one else is, I'm, make a motion that we approve the Eureka Avenue Improvement Project Proposed Layout Plan as presented by Ryan.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye. Aye. Oppose and a motion carries. All right, moving on to our next item this evening is item 8C, which is resolution, consideration of resolution 4222401, authorize execution of MinDOT grant agreements for airport improvement and specifically the hydraulic angle broom. And Dave, I think you're leading us through this.
Good evening, ma'am and counsel. Every so often, the state of Minnesota has a round of funding for eligible municipal airports to buy, buy equipment that would help benefit the airport.
Oh, can you grab your mic? Thank you.
I've been on vacation too long. In talking with staff, one of the biggest things that we're missing out there is something to be able to get the slush and like dustings of snow off. We can't use chemicals out there. So in talking to the staff, something like this would be very beneficial just to, when you get those light dustings of snow or when the snow does melt off, that you're able to run up and down the runway. We already own the loader, so what we'd be looking for is that you could untach your plow and then attach onto that broom and be able to broom out there. So with that grant, we, we applied for it and were awarded it. It's an 8515 split, so the actual motor is approximately right around $20,000. And the city would end up paying just a little under $3,000 for it. And the state of Minnesota would pay the other remaining balance. So, so really what we're looking for tonight is, you know, a resolution in support of this, this grant. And that we should get it, get this summer and be operational for next fall or winter time, if we get snow next winter.
When?
But any other questions? If anybody has any questions, be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Dave. Counsel, what questions might we have?
Where we store this broom?
In, in the winter months, we'd store it out onsite. In the summer, depending if we still, the e-hanger stays there, it'll probably be out there or we'd bring it back and store it in one of the other shops inside. Fine with hydraulics, you want to keep that, that inside so it doesn't get sun rotted, rotted out. But plan would be that it would sit probably, I would assume by the fuel tanks, you know, for, to drive out there and hook right up to it.
And this was part of the capital equipment plan, is that right? This is?
We had money budgeted in, in 2024 for snow, snow improvements. So we don't have to spend it all now because we got a decent sized grant. We had it funded to purchase the whole thing and.
Oh, we did. Okay.
Yep. So this will be a savings or not spending that extra $19,000 or $16,000.
Any other questions, comments?
Is it, it looks like this is coming out of the capital equipment fund. Wouldn't it come out of the airport fund?
We could, we could take it out of there, but we ran an issue a few years ago when the airport purchased the tractor. And then it got wonky when we got out of the grant that we had to repay the airport fund and pay ourselves some and pay MinDOT some that it's, it is capital equipment and we do charge back when we, we use it to, to do the operations, so.
Is it going to be used off the airport grounds?
It, it'll be used on the airport, on our equivalent.
Because I mean, so if it's, it's going to be solely used on the airport?
Solely on the airport, yeah. As part of the airport grant, you need to use it at the airport.
Could that, so I guess I don't understand what happened with the tractor then.
It wasn't getting used all the time on the airport. So in order to use it outside of the airport. So in order to use it outside of the airport, then we had to buy the grant out.
Do we have, refresh my memory, does the airport have its own capital equipment fund?
They do not. There's no equipment owned at all by the airport. It's all owned and held within Public Works. So this would be, this would be a one-off. If we purchase this with the airport dollars, it'd be starting a fleet of airport equipment.
Sorry.
Christina.
Um, so, but just looking at the grant language and maybe we'll have to have legal step in on, on two point three. I mean, I read it to say that it has to be used for public aeronautical purposes since we're getting the state grant, regardless of if we use capital improvement funds or airport funds though. So I'm not sure if that was something different for the tractor.
It was purchased out of that same grant.
But then, so why wouldn't we use airport funds to do it if it can only be used at the airport? Because, I think that was the question, right?
Right. And it sounds like just because we haven't budgeted for it. Is that, am I following correctly?
Yep. So we had it budgeted for in the general fund to purchase this equipment. Now we're getting a, receiving a grant. So which that money off, it'd still be used in the same spot that it was intended to be used. So, I mean, we can bring it to the airport commission and ask if they would like to spend the twenty-nine hundred dollars to buy the angle broom.
What's the planned, what's the useful life? Is it a five-year equipment?
Oh, I would say about fifteen years.
Fifteen years? I understand the point that's being made that if it's specifically for airport, it should be airport fund. If our net cost is three thousand dollars, I'm not sure it's worth the accounting gymnastics of fifteen years of having it in a separate fund that, I, I appreciate the, the argument from a point, but I, I guess I'm, I'm comfortable with it coming from the general fund, given that it is three thousand dollars spread out over fifteen years of use. I kind of use the de minimis rule. But I, I do think, you know, in general, if we have, if we had to pay full fare, in my mind, it would be a slightly stronger argument that yes, it should be, you know, capital equipment at the airport fund, especially if it's specifically used. This one, I'm, I'm not gonna have any heartburn if it's general fund again, just given the dollar amount and spread over fifteen years.
I guess, I know, I mean, we've talked about it in the past, that, you know, we've done joint workshops with the EDA. We're talking about doing joint workshops with the parks, just to all get on the same page. I guess I just readvocate for that same thing with the airport commission. So whether it's a three thousand dollar spend or thirty thousand dollar spend, I mean, it sounds like, you know, twenty, the twenty-four thousand, it was budgeted in the, the general fund. So, it just would be nice to kind of understand kind of the mechanics of all that.
There.
So, go ahead, Dave.
So Dave, when you say it gets, it gets billed back, like, is, is that a accounting? How, you talk about the accounting gymnastics or whatever the term was, but like, how does that then get billed back to the airport fund?
So we track staff time and equipment that gets used out at the airport. And every, annually, we submit a reimbursement to MINDOT for a portion of what we spent out there. So if we plow out there with a tandem plow truck and an operator that gets charged, or we go out there with a loader and a plow that gets charged back, or we're out in the summer with the ground master mower and three kids weed whipping, that all gets tracked and then charged back. And there's a maximum what they'll reimburse us, but the more we spend out there, then the more we'll get back.
But it gets charged to the airport fund and then reimbursement from the state. So, rather than their time being charged to the general fund.
Right, right. And so I guess if that's the case, I'm, I'm a little bit amenable to taking this out of the general fund if that actually is getting billed back. But to Councilman Erickson's point, I think a conversation, a bigger conversation about all this needs to be, to be had. And regardless if it's, you know, three thousand or thirty thousand, it, we need to be doing it the, the same way, I think.
Fair. Um, points of conversation. I'm open to a motion if anyone is ready. I would move that counsel, I would move that counsel approved resolution four twenty-two, twenty-four, zero, one, the airport grant for the broom. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye. Aye. Oppose and motion carries. Okay, our next item is, I'm getting lost on my electronic agenda. Sorry, guys. And then the size gets smaller and I can't see it. Okay, our next item is item eight D, and this is a, a two-part item. First is to rescind a resolution that we passed on March twenty-fifth. And then second is reconsideration of the airport lease rate adjustments. And Christina.
Yeah, so Mayor and Counsel, at the March twenty-fifth meeting, council voted unanimously to approve resolution zero-three, twenty-five, twenty-four, oh, one regarding the twenty-twenty-five to twenty-twenty-six airport lease rate adjustments. Since that time, Councilmember Huesnick has contacted me and let me know that he would like to see that resolution rescinded. And so that's the first part that we have before you tonight. Excuse me, if the motion to rescind is approved by a two-thirds majority of the council, then we can take that second part. And so maybe to make it easier, I'll just stop there and we'll take that first, first part about rescinding motion zero, or resolution zero-three, twenty-five, twenty-four dash oh, one.
Very good. Is there a motion?
Madam Mayor, make, like to make a motion that we rescind the resolution zero-three, two-five, dash two-four, dash zero, one.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, motion carries. And that brings us to our.
So Mayor and Counsel, now it's as if that resolution was never approved in March and we can, I don't wanna start back all over at the beginning, but I'm certainly willing to answer any questions. If you might remember from that meeting, we had quite a bit of discussion about how the city in the past has adjusted the airport ground lease rates for the last, two times over the last four years. It has been using the last twelve months CPI change in order to make that adjustment. Prior to that, we got some information. It was an average of the previous two years. And in twenty-sixteen, I think they went back and took the CPI all the way from two thousand eight up to twenty-sixteen. So there have been a number of different ways that you can look at increasing the lease rates at the, the airport. Some of the leases, though not all of them, mentioned that it should be a reasonable rate and using the CPI. But it doesn't say again exactly how you need to use the CPI. So given that the vote was unanimous in March, what I included in your packet for resolution zero-four, twenty-two, twenty-four, oh, five is consistent with what the last two increases at the airport had been, which was related to the CPI increase for the last twelve months.
Thank you, Christina. Any questions before we consider? We did have a fair amount of discussion on this in our last meeting. So if anyone's watching along and wants more information, I guess I would point back to that meeting conversation. I, I would move that counsel approve resolution four twenty-two, twenty-four, zero, five, which is a resolution adjusting the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six lease rates for the Forest Lake Airport. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this topic?
Yes, I guess I have a couple of comments. I think that, you know, even during that, that meeting, there was a lot of angst, some angst from some of us. There's been a lot since from the public that's come forward. So I think this issue would be just another reason for a workshop with, with the airport commission to, to have further discussions. One of just men.
Noted for sure. We, we do need to have an airport workshop on a future agenda. So. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye. Aye. Oppose.
Abstain.
And one abstention. Motion carries. Okay, that concludes our regular agenda topics this evening. We are going to move into a workshop portion for, to cover our next two topics. In this workshop portion, you will see that we are a little less formal in our approach, a little more conversational. Anything we talk about in these, in this discussion that needs official action will come back before council at, on another agenda as part of our action agenda. So Ryan, with that, please kick us off and we're gonna do some discussion on North Shore Trail.
Mayor City Council, next I'll jump into North Shore Trail pavement maintenance project, keyword maintenance. We're not doing a reconstruction or planned reconstruction in this portion of the North, North Shore Trail. But we'll go through to see if there's an appetite to move forward with this project in a twenty-five project. Currently is in the city's capital improvement plan identified as a twenty-five project, but funding would require additional actions by the city and going through a bond process to finance this project. Project location is North Shore Trail from Greenway all the way out to Highway ninety-seven. Reason we don't go all the way to Highway sixty-one is because that area's been identified for full reconstruction. That's gonna require city water and sewer reconstruction in that area too. Once we get out and around in the area of this project limits, there is no water main, no public water supply. And sanitary sewer actually runs in between the road and the lake. So a lot, lot areas through people's backyards. And then there are some areas, yeah, you get close to the road, but some, uh, don't have that infrastructure in the corridor that we do in that other area that's not being part of this project. Project scope is what's been identified would be to remove and replace storm sewer. So any corrugated metal pipe, that'd be removed and replaced. We'd have to work with Public Works to go have some televising done to identify any sanitary sewer repairs that would need to be done. Most of that would be anticipated as manholes that are in the area of the project. If there was something major discovered with one of the lines, then we would have to address that as well. But don't anticipate any major line improvements. Improved drainage where necessary. Some areas we might add curb and gutter, and I'll get into that specifically later. But a lot of this area too doesn't have platted right away along this corridor. So we can't be going chasing all these ditching projects in non-private property. You'd have to get the proper easements or temporary easements to do that. So that's not anticipated to be part of the project. But we are looking at full-deep reclamation, which we do a lot of our local pavement roads and grade it and then pave new bituminous surface back. And then with this road, it would have new striping and signage. Knots in, knot in the scope would be going back as far as driveway culvert replacements, removal and replacements. A lot of this area is ditch, ditches and driveway culverts. I would be chasing ditch grading. There are no pedestrian facilities, pathways or sidewalks. We can get unique with the striping of the road. Maybe you wanna shift the center line, you know, a little bit and have one wider shoulder than the other. But that's kind of the flexibility because we're basically removing and replacing exactly what's out, the footprint that's out there. And the reason thus too is then we are anticipating we're not gonna have full stormwater requirements. But if we did go into full reconstruction or increase impervious area, then we would be having to identify areas for stormwater ponds or infiltration basins. Existing conditions out there, pavement's a little over, just around thirty-two feet. Currently two twelve-foot driving lanes and shoulder ranges quite a bit throughout the, the area, two to four feet in width. Some more pictures of some of the existing roadways. It's hard to really see the road conditions from the, the pictures. You know, it's a lot, lot, if you just drive it quickly, you can see a lot of those conditions. And the pavement failure that's occurring in a lot of the areas out there. So these are some of the examples of where we might wanna explore a little further of curb and gutter. Might need to be installed in some areas where you got a very steep slope and you got constants runoff down that slope and sediment being pushed out onto the shoulder or area where it doesn't tie in very well to that area. That's, that'd be an opportunity or an area to review further. Or then we got a lot of areas out here that the driveways slope down and the garages are lower than the road. So actually in the winter, we deal with some complaints. We're directing runoff towards those driveways and their garages. But that's just areas to explore further. We'd obviously, we're close with Public Works because we don't wanna over-engineer this road. This is more of a maintenance road. And that's where, you know, we're already short on dollars. But, you know, having a better, smoother road, obviously, I think you guys will receive less phone calls. It's easier for Public Works to plow in the winter too. If it's very bumpy, a lot of not true crown to it, you know, their plow can't get down on that pavement and scrape that snow and ice off. But if it's smooth, that'll improve winter travelability as well. Here's just some examples of some CMP culverts. Obviously, you can probably see they've done some patching above it, probably rusted out, threw something on top of it for the meantime being in the patch in the road. We'd replace those again with the reinforced concrete pipe and then put aprons on them so they would have some better slope coming off the, off, on the ends there, which would be helpful if a vehicle ran off the road in that particular area. The slope would be not as steep. And then just better with erosion control. So the construction that would occur out there, this is also stuff that we do on the local roads when we talk about that full-deep reclamation. There'll be a machine that goes through and grinds it all up in place. And they'll come behind and pack it and water it just to keep it in place and moist. And then depend on what we need for grade sometimes, and they'll have to come and take that excess material off too. If the pavement's too thick, which we know in some spots we've found, because this used to be an old county road and they just would keep layering up. When, you know, blacktop was cheap back then, that was just the means and method on how you fix a road. You just kept adding to it, right? Now we got a lot of housing around that corridor and, you know, you, you can't just keep doing that because now we gotta blend in the driveways and other stuff like that too. So. So this, you might see a milling machine out there as well. Construction process, we'd remove and replace storm sewer, rehab sanitary manholes, reclaim the existing bituminous. If we had excess material, we'd remove that too. If we did identify through geotechnical work that there were some areas of very poor soils or very thin thicknesses in some spots, we would have to maybe move some of that reclaimed material from one spot to another to add some better thickness to that area. Pack that reclaim and then pave the new two bituminous lifts. And then complete restoration and place a gravel shoulder and signing and striping with the project. Construction traffic control, there definitely will be a need for road closures when we do the storm sewer crossing replacements. And we'd set up adequate detour and communication to address that. Daily road closures or flagging operations will also be utilized during the working hours to complete the street maintenance work. Items that would need to be explored further, geotechnical work. We could do soil borings, but on a distance of this great, we probably would want to do the ground penetrating radar. Just drive a machine over it and I'll give you computerized stuff, but you'll do some verifications with some soil borings. Dial it in a little more accurate. And then we would want to do, you know, structure assessments, go look and review at all existing culverts, get accurate sizing on them. And then look at manholes, do any assessments on those. Any areas that are of concern that might need some engineering work done with the project, might have to complete some survey with those and then work on what a phase in the project would fit this particular neighborhood and communication wise. So with the maintenance project, that total project length, it's estimated a five-point-nine million until we do some of that work I just outlined on this previous slide. You don't really know exactly where you stand by doing, until you get that field work done. But that'd be done early in the project to identify the, you know, where the city would have to go into that bonding, bond request. Project costs could go down or they could go up. Just depends on what you find on the field in this old area. And until you go through all that stuff, we won't know. Some of the reasons we're talk, talking about this now is you got the Highway eight project coming, right? Currently, they're planning to let that project in two thousand twenty-five, which would mean twenty-six, twenty-seven construction. And that basically kind of cut off our access in this area or we wouldn't wanna shut down or have this significant of a project in the area at the same time as they are. So that would either keep it as it is planned for the capital improvement plan now in twenty-five or it would likely get pushed out to twenty-eight or later. This is just a, a layout that is being proposed, part of the Highway eight project that's kind of more local to us. This is actually Greenway. You can see the dark. Is my mouth, does my mouth show up? You see the dark black line running along the bottom? You see the dark black line running along the bottom? That's the border between Wyoming and Forest Lake. So a very small portion in Forest Lake, but you can see what's gonna uh, being proposed from there all the way up to the Highway eight corridor uh, with the project. I do have an email saved that's, this is what's being proposed and at this time, no local share cost is being asked of the city. And I said, we support that. If things change, no, we don't. We can do that on our own and not do it with federal money, you know? Because that project's gonna have obviously a lot of federal money in it. Uh, but, so that'll be done in twenty-six or twenty-seven with the project, so that's why we're, you know, talking about some of this other stuff. And then, you know, with some of the other projects going on in the area too, twenty-five fits well for the general area. Uh, otherwise, you know, twenty-eight or later is really what probably that timeframe to fit. So here's what a potential project could look like if the city council still wants to move forward with this project. For twenty-five construction, we, we would come back, first meeting in uh, May to authorize plans and specs. And then all that field work would get uh, addressed and then I assume, you know, typically, we don't do big public outreach on maintenance projects, but knowing the, the type of this road and the number of people that come to this road, uh, that would be something that we would want to work closely on. How do we communicate that early? Uh, and they might know of some stuff that's, you know, cities not aware of out there just because of the stretch and distance and our limited visibility out there on a daily basis. And then follow it up with a project that could be done in twenty-five out here. So with that, just any questions if something you guys wanna move forward with, you know, obviously, May would be a critical month in the project.
Thank you, and council has opened it up. Any questions, comments, thoughts based on Ryan's presentation?
Yeah, I, I, I like it. Um, I definitely think we should get the public input, bring them along, you know, to communicate why we're not doing a trail. But also to share that idea of offsetting the striping and create a, a walkable shoulder. I think that would go a long ways.
I just, again, just wanna reiterate, this is a maintenance project, right? We're not doing anything that's gonna significantly increase something, you know? Because like you talked about the shoulder, you know, we could shift a foot or two one way or another, right? But in the eyes of somebody, that's not gonna be nearly good enough and we could argue that point to death that.
I, I do think that's part of the reason why we have to do a fairly high level of public outreach on this is just to set the expectation. There's been so many discussions in this community about North Shore Trail and part of the comp plan process. We've talked about, you know, trails and all sorts of, all sorts of amenities of this street. And if we are approaching this as a maintenance project, I think part of that public outreach is really just to have the advanced engagement and kind of awareness as to why this has to fit as a maintenance project right now. Um, and really align on expectations. And we'll, we'll hear some pushback. Um, and that pushback, I believe, comes from a, a good place. It's also, you know, we know that this project has not been funded because it's a challenge and sizable and expensive. And if we, I mean, I, I look that if, if there's a, a time we can get this done and if it's twenty-twenty-five, we should do it. Um, and if that means that it has to be a maintenance-based project, then I think it's, it's better than an answer we've had for a North Shore Trail in a very, very long time. So, you know, we've all wrestled with how does this fit? And I think that's just part of the public engagement process is telling the story of why and why not a trail and all of that stuff. I think people just need to hear it, so.
So a trail, you know, would bring additional impervious area and we know what that would trigger. And we would have to also probably most likely be purchasing probably some property to construct some of those stormwater BMPs instead of, you know, traditionally thinking they would just go in the right-of-way, right? So, you know, that's, that's something to think about too, but then you also look around the city when we have existing trails that already have really good con- connectivity to other trails, to regional trails that are in very poor condition too, so. And that's some of the easy answers that we can show some of those pictures. But we need to get the payment addressed because that's also creating a lot of other stuff and a lot of other maintenances going there versus somewhere else. But then in this area too, we don't have dedicated right-of-way along the whole corridor. So you would, that's a whole another process that's gonna have to be done, completed over time. Unless that was the project you wanted to focus on the next five years, then I would say, yep, let's go all in and then, yeah, deal it. But we know the list of other stuff in the capital improvement plan, that is not a reality. And we just have to be smart stewards of efficiency on, you know, your projects. And this is the best fit for this project for a very long time. You know, as some other development might happen out there in some of the areas that have potentially seen some concepts and they start developing some spurs out to connect into, then some of that becomes more of a priority, right? Because right now, we're not really taking anybody to anywhere.
When it, you mentioned right-of-way and that was one of the questions on my list for this project. Um, so because it's same footprint, we don't need to acquire any additional right-of-way, we don't need to do anything with right-of-way. What is the right-of-way impact to this project, Ryan?
Eyes getting a little more focused. I'm gonna just use the word prescriptive right-of-way. I just don't wanna say anything that, well, I mean, yeah, so it's all prescriptive right-of-way where it doesn't truly exist as platted right-of-way. Through a lot of the uh, home redevelopments along this corridor too, we've had uh, requests and obtain, you know, easements that have helped some of those processes. So when you went from a traditional cabin that was head property, we were all to the center line of the road, we've then acquired some easements with those over time. I, I think that's still the, the process that's going forward on a lot of that stuff. But, you know, we were able to get a lot of the area by just doing that too in time. And more, more time will allow more of that to happen as well.
Is, is there any? I mean, timing here is crucial, obviously, but is there any opportunity to, to look at maybe a stretch of it? My understanding is um, the plan, long-term plan would be to go along there and then connect it from Greenway to Two Thirty-Fifth and then through the back way to some of those neighborhoods that are potentially gonna be there and ones that are already there. I mean, no matter when we decide to do this, if, if a trail, if it's ten years, five years, ten, fifteen, twenty, it's gonna get more and more expensive. I think that is a desire of the community. Is there a way to at least take this in chunks? Because then the next stretch would be Greenway going back to sixty-one, which is gonna be a full and then improved pedestrian sidewalks and that. So now all of a sudden, you do have some pedestrian or trail that would get you from sixty-one out to Two Thirty-Fifth and then maybe into the back of those, some of those future neighborhoods. I just, we're doing, looking at this now and I know that is the desire of a lot of people and is there an opportunity to get some options if that even is an option?
I would say if that's the the route that the, you guys would wanna go down, this would not be a twenty-five project. This would go into property acquisition. This would go into obtaining imper- easements or even temporary easements. This would go into full stormwater permitting. And it's gonna go into relocating ditches that traditionally in this area, we're gonna have to go into wetland delineations and probably have some wetland impacts. It's gonna have some probably impacts on private utilities and coordinating relocating some of them. So that, and that's, that's the stuff you start getting in when you go outside of the footprint of the road that's been there forever and everything else has just been over here, right?
You mentioned with the Highway eight that, what's the, what's the next time we could consider a project here if it's not in twenty-twenty-five?
I would say it's best that you would do a twenty-eight or later because that way Highway eight and all those e- accesses are open. It's just, there's a lot of stuff that's, people are com- coming down Two Thirty-Fifth to get to North Shore and around and Highway eight's gonna have some detours and stuff like that. Maybe twenty-seven, but I just still think you're gonna have some significant access reduction on Highway eight and twenty-seven, so. Because Highway eight's going to what it is to like a road of like Frenchman Boulevard and Hugo. It'll be median in a lot of the areas. They are planning a trail along the whole north side of that Highway eight project and connecting down into the Gateway Trail area. Uh, but there's gonna be some significant impacts, some significant road closures with that project. And uh, a lot of accessibility and it just, it's not even fair to your EMS. I mean, what do they do when something happens? Where do they go? How far around are they gonna have to go? It's, it's too big of a guessing game.
I, I maybe have um, project, um, I'm just, I, we have struggled for so long with what to do with North Shore Trail and how to fund this project that um, I'm maybe, it could be argued I'm overly antsy to just get this done because it's been such a, it's such a large project and it's such a, at such a price tag. It's been such a beast to find the right, where does it fit? And you can even see even what, when we're, we're saying it fits, it only fits because we're bonding for it. And so I appreciate the comments of Councilmember Roberts and I agree, that it'd be lovely to have that full picture. But we've been trying to paint that full picture for twenty years and um, it, now we have at least a maintenance project that is near-term can get done before Highway eight. I would hate to lose that window. Um, if we don't have some solid plans on what it, what, you know, a trail is going to take and all of those things, because I, I agree that it's a great amenity. I'm just very hesitant to hold this project for three years for something that we don't know what that size is going to be and if that's going to fit. And it's part of it's just the challenge from my perspective on just where we've been in getting this project done. Three more winters of that not being done is just challenging, so.
Yeah, yeah, learning that you can't go another that long. I mean, it's, it's a mess, so I agree.
It's hard.
Move forward and um, you know, if you can push that to a wider lane or just, you know, allow some bike traffic or something, people might be okay with that, but.
Well, and, and I think also, I think we have to approach it as we hear the feedback and we know the broader desire and just the frankness of there's not a, within the next five years, alternative and.
County doesn't want it back?
We keep asking. I mean, that, I mean, this is, let's go back to the history on this project. I think this needs to be part of the story on how we acquired this project and we acquired this project without a long-term maintenance plan. Um, and we just have to be frank about that, that um, you know, how we acquired it and we need to do something, so. The best option is unfortunately a, a ways away from a funding perspective, I fear, so. Unless residents, you know, tell us they want to fund that and I just think we start looking at those price tags and we hear other priorities and it's hard to, it's hard to think that that's gonna be palatable here in the next couple of years.
Well, I don't wanna move forward if we get there, because you know you're gonna get there. They're gonna want that, right?
Of course.
So you're either kind of all in on a maintenance project or we just put the brakes on and.
No, I support it.
So I just, you know, yeah, I would love to have a trail along there too and use it out, you know, that'd be a great area to go biking or walking, but.
Do you have an, to support, to, when we're having this conversation, what's hard about this is we need to, you know, the, the attention span of whoever's attending that, you know, open house or whatever is, we've got somebody's attention for ten minutes and we need to somehow get, it's kind of just like what we saw with the road, with the monopoly example, right? We need some graphics or something to help pa- paint that picture that tells the story that we've all seen from talking about this for hours and years and um.
This kind of reminds me of Imperial Avenue back in two thousand and five. Remember how the lower portion of the street got paved and the top didn't? And it was left gravel for a long time because they wanted all this and that in the project and, but didn't wanna deal with the cost. So that project portion sat with all the other participate, people did, so. You know, if, that's kind of where we're gonna go with an open
Right.
Uh, feedback and we want this, well, okay, then the project's now Two Thirty-Fifth to Highway ninety-seven. Because that's the area, we're not talking the trail, right? You know, that's where I almost see a split happening already.
American Council, can I just say, so, I mean, the city's gonna be spending almost six million dollars. I think you wanna have some public communications. It doesn't necessarily mean to invite feedback, but I look at it, at it more as a way for us to get information out to them. What's, what is proposed to happen on the road? When is it proposed to happen? When will their traffic to their home be impacted and, and things like that? More than maybe what you've done on some other projects where you're soliciting feedback, but
Yep, so.
It's, I think it's really important that we have that public um, process through this.
We would definitely want a public open house to talk about the scope of the planned project because if they show up there and just hammer it and hammer it, we might just wanna stop while we're still early enough in the project and you know, and maybe it makes you reconsider, but def- what I envision is us having a public open house upstairs. And we kind of do it like we did at the RECA, you know, have a bunch of layouts outs. And, you know, with some maybe boards of some of the stuff that would be included in the project, but then go through a PowerPoint. So that way they could all listen at once and then we could break off and have questions again. Otherwise, if we just went into this and they just, you know, you talk to one person or two and others didn't get to talk, sat around the layouts, this way they're gonna hear everything, then we can go into questions after that.
To Christina's, I, I, pick, pick up your comment here in just a minute, but in, to Christina's point, I think approaching that public feedback more around the logistics of the project, here's proposed timing, here's what it's going to mean for you, here's how we're planning in advance for public safety. We're doing this project before Highway eight gets kicked off. If we make it as much about the logistics also and guide, yes, there's gonna naturally be some design questions that come up. So I wouldn't advocate that we approach this as a blank sheet of paper, tell us what you want for North Shore Trail. It's more of within what we are able to do, um, kind of guide the, guide the discussion based on that. Christine, I think you were gonna add something.
Just wanted to add too, so I think it's been, my understanding, it's been quite a while since the city has bonded for a road project. And so Kevin and I had talked to Ellers about which process to use and it would be the street reconstruction process. And why that's important and why I think public involvement is important is because you will pass a resolution to approve that bond, but you'll have to wait thirty days because there's an opportunity for a reverse referendum from the public to petition to have it go to the next election. And so if it feels like I'm pushing you more than you, you or, or Ryan might be comfortable on a public process, it's because that's one of the risks that you um, will face in financing the project this way as well. And so I think the more work we can put in to it upfront, um, will hopefully help those thirty days pass without event.
Is, is there a way to get a, an estimate of like if we were to go trail and wait and like, so we're at six million dollars and it could be twenty-five million? I mean, having those numbers would be helpful to be able to educate the public as to why it, it can't happen.
Yeah, we could easily put costs together of infrastructure and.
Cost, cost of some of that infrastructure and then also the, just some, the process of what that would have ta- with, what that would take to acquire that many right-of-way. So you can certainly quantify the number of impacted project or properties and just, it's, it's a, as I understand it, a fairly sizable right-of-way acquisition project if we were going to do that. And so I think just having some of those, that, those data points helps to hone in on. That's why at this time, you know, council's on, you know, the project in front of them is a maintenance project.
And watershed impacts, I think, would be the biggest thing, another really big thing, right? So who's willing to, who's willing to have a swale in their yard? Sorry, sorry.
We, yes. Too soon, Christina, too soon. Other, I mean, what's, what's challenging about this is, um, again, it's size of project and it's the timing and it, it's a little, it's much like we were just talking about with Eureka, if we're going to do this, um, it's going to move fairly quickly, so council has to, um, you know, it's, it's kind of in all of our interests if we are, you know, kind of voicing opinion now and, and expressing some level of support or concern if there's concern. Other thoughts, feedback for that?
No, I'm, I'm in support of it. I mean, of course, we have a deeper wish list, but, you know, this is what we're wrapped today.
Yeah, I agree. I'm supportive. A trail would be nice. For me, it's like the number one thing when I hear people complain about North Shore Trail is, of course, they'd want pedestrian facilities and a trail and how lovely that would be, but I think at this point, um, this is the best that we can do, so. And I think all those comparisons would be super helpful for that open house.
You'd, Ryan, you'd mentioned maybe just Two Thirty-Fifth to ninety-seven and holding off on the section from Greenway to Two Thirty-Fifth. Does that make any sense? Is that, because then you do again, get people to Two Thirty-Fifth and that road is less traveled, not much shoulder. But then you can also get out to the other end of the lake, basically. And it just makes it more bikable or whatever the term you wanna use or just pedestrian-friendly.
Dave, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think your worst of your pavements are all. are all outside that 235th area.
Where is the worst stretch of pavement?
What's that?
That 235th area has been redone.
Yeah, 235th is, I think, 2014 plus then some crack fill and other stuff, but is the mouse showing up?
No.
So, see the, the 90-degree curve? If you go south and that's, you know, right in that area, south and out to 97, those, those are your worst pavements. So, you, 235th to Greenway, I, I think that's not the worst, but I know you get a lot of calls on it, but for sure that 90-degree a, area and then out to the south is where your worst pavements are.
Just, I just throw it out there for discussion, I.
Other points of feedback?
I think another reason, yeah, it's a maintenance project, right? But why we wanted to bring this forward when, you know, there was some push to, why aren't we doing this? Well, this is because, right? You know, there's, this is a long roadway. It could have a lot of different types of improvements, but these are a lot of the constraints that come with some of those conversation points. So, I think it's good that we're going through this process now. So, we're not. Last thing we want to do is go try to get a project built or, you know, approved and then, you know, we're arguing the whole time too, right? But there are a lot of maintenance stuff out here that's, our workers could certainly spend their time and energy elsewhere.
My concern on, I don't know, I, I can, my concern on having it be, if we're adding an amenity like a trail, my concern on doing that in a piecemeal approach without a broader plan of getting the whole thing done, I, I worry that we, we just serve that one piece without the broader answer. And I just, I, I feel like that's the wrong, it's, it's, I, I, I'm not comfortable in the near term being able to make that decision. And I, I feel like we're, we're running out of project time if we want this to happen before Highway eight. And so, I'm, kind of our options are limited to what the time we can accommodate. And so, that's why I'm nervous I'm veering too far off of a fairly, it's a big project, but it's fairly simple in design.
So, is, is the plan on, on the first, on 61 to Greenway with all the full reconstruction utilities and that, to get some, ability to get some funding on that? Is that what's been maybe discussed as potential?
Was one of the areas that was a potential LRIP candidate, but it was the decision to go after the LRIP application for county-state at Highway 32.
So, then that would kind of omits the option for this, for here?
The area, the, from Highway 61 to Greenway?
Yeah.
So, that area needs to be reconstructed because we need to remove and replace existing water main and sanitary sewer. That's an area that was identified in the sewer study too that had some constraints. And is it a five-foot walk? Maybe a five, maybe a four-foot walk along the one side, right? So, that area was going to have pedestrian improvements part of that section. Uh, it's, it's obviously an oversized road too. So, we would go through probably a few different scenarios and bounce that. That was going to probably require a lot of public engagement, that, that section.
And would that be like that 27 or 28, 29 timeframe?
I, again, would not recommend.
I mean, after.
Obviously, that's not going to be ready for 25 construction season. So, that'd be 2028 or later.
My thought would be, you know, could, could that, from, you know, from 235th back to 61 be part of that project? And we move forward with this one from 235th all the way to 97? If we want more time to explore potential trail to, to 235th?
So, you're saying we would make this, we would make this section smaller? Too, shorter?
Right, right, to, it, I don't know what that is from Greenway to 235th. Is, is, Dave, is that mile and a half stretch to, it's, it's not that great? It's just a mile that we wouldn't do, that we would give us some time to look at doing some trail facilities to get to 235th.
That could, that could be an option too, but just keep, keep this thought on the back of your mind. That area on North Shore there, from 61 to Greenway, was just under $10 million.
No. And we don't have, from North Shore to Greenway is just under 10 million? And we don't have a, we don't have a timeline for that yet, correct?
It's in the CIP, but with the Highway eights getting pushed back.
Yeah.
I don't think you would want to stay with the timeline that's in your CIP. And then you would have to work very differently through your financing too, moving forward.
Right. If I'm, I, I'm. What's our, what's our, um, if we were to take that, if we were to take that approach, what's the timeline to get some of that information? Do we have time as, you know, as we're considering, as, as you're considering that, what is the timeline to get that type of information? My concern is we're putting off a certainty for things, many things that are unknown and there's a lot of residents impacted by that section. And if I'm, if I'm that resident, I kind of want that street, like, redone pretty soon.
What level of accuracy do you want, right? I mean, I could go.
Highly accurate.
Start working on it tomorrow, but knowing the topography and what's going to have to happen if you widen the road and put a trail in there, you're going to lose the ditch. Then now all of a sudden you're pushing the, the, the typical section, the trail out into the ditch. What are you going to do with the water? Now you know you're going to have curb and gutter and storm sewer. Then where's that storm sewer going to take you to? Do I then, you know, have to then chase it to property acquisition or wherever to have a pond built? So, those are the things that would go into that quickly. I don't probably, I don't have time to wait for a survey to go out there and do that, to get that. So, it'll be a two-dimensional estimate, but, I mean, it's somewhat close.
There's so much stuff, the watershed district is involved in that too. I mean, would you, you wouldn't, how would you even plan until you know exactly what they want to do?
Well, we would have to come up with a design that meets the rules and requirements and submit it for an application for them to review and approve. But, I mean, just like you would on, I think, other street reconstruction project.
Yeah.
But then, if you're starting to get in some of the reconstruction stuff, I got to bring up your assessment policy. Like, are we going to go down the 429 process? Your policy says we would. So, that, that adds feasibility report. That adds certain steps in that project.
You get good, you got a big staff.
So, I, I follow.
Yeah, but I can't schedule, I can't hold meetings without certain days in between them, right? I got to follow state statute.
What's the, um, so what's the tipping point that would get us into 429? And 429 is assessment statute, right? What's the tipping point that gets us into now we're, now we would be considering assessments?
I would want to probably discuss that with the city attorney just because you're, it doesn't clearly define between, could you hide this all in trail work? Or are you going to get into some street work? You're going to get into some, right? But how, how do you maneuver through that?
Fair.
With the current assessment policy?
Fair, okay.
Because last thing I want to do is get down and do, go through a, you know, s, process and then all of a sudden you get appeal and I. Uh, that could be very timely and costly.
And just for transparency of process, it's been a very long time since we've done assessments, is that right?
2015 was the last assessment project you did and that was 15 Streets.
15 Streets, yeah.
You tried doing that in 2009. Assessment policy was, uh, much different than it was when it was revised, once you implemented franchise fees. And then you did the full assessment project in 2015.
Okay.
So, I, I'm in full support of the, of the whole project. I would like to somehow explore a little bit of this 235th to Greenway stretch of maybe not doing it. Maybe that makes no sense at all. I just, I think that that is a key piece and, and so maybe 23, that section ends up being all of a sudden 61 to 235th on the second phase of this. I understand your point there about, you know, most of the people drive through and they're going to have a mile of bumpy road, which is really odd when they've had this nice. But I think you could maybe sell that to the public, like, we're looking at, we may not get there, but we're looking at doing some trail amenities there. I think people would be okay with that or would want that. So, whatever the rest of you guys want.
Ryan, what, um, how much specificity do you need from us tonight on?
If we're in favor of moving forward with the project footprints, I think we would want to come back in the May to authorize plans and specs. Maybe that project changes during that project, but the main thing is to really get the geotechnical work going. We would need that information anyways.
Either way.
And that's not going to change. So, that'll be something that, you know, we did that on 15th Street, right? You actually did the geotech work in 2009, but we used it in 2015 or 14 for the design, so. So, that, that stuff will be stuff that's there. And then move forward from there, but.
Right.
But Mayor, I think we, we want to know tonight a little. I'm hearing one member who wants to really explore the trails and I'm not sure I'm hearing that from the rest of you. Not to minimize your concern, right? But like, majority rules, we got to figure out direction here. And I, I, I think it's, in order for Ryan to bring something back, we need to know what that is. Or do you want another workshop to have him bring some more of these details back before you decide if you want to cut it off at 235th instead of Greenway? I don't want to go down one path and then get pulled another if that's not the direction, so.
But he's, he could start doing, I mean, the, the work's going to be the same. If we're, whether we widen it out, the work started.
In the area, right now, we, we're not going to go out and blanket survey. It would be areas of, we agreed with Public Works where some of that curb and gutter might go in, that we would have to survey maybe 50 feet or 100 feet of a project. But if you're going to look at fully exploring a trail to be added other than just giving you some two-dimensional costs, you would have to go do a topography survey out there. And you would do soil borings down in that area too, so you know what type of material and you, and I don't know offhand, do I already start getting wetlands in some of that area? You might have to do some of that.
Maybe if I could try and make it a little easier, as I'm understanding it. Maybe the question before you tonight, because I'm hearing general support that we want to go forward with something on North Shore Trail. Maybe the question is as simple, is it from Greenway to 97 or 235th to 97? And once you make that choice, then we know if we need to go down the trail route, right? Like, if I hear from most of you it's 235th, then we focus on that. And then the long-term thing is the trails and all the rest. Is that kind of, am I tracking the conversation, you think? That's, that's what I'm hearing is maybe that's where the trail issue comes into play is. And so, maybe we set the parameters of, if it's just a maintenance project, well, maybe, I think there's a part of it that's just a maintenance project, right? Councilmember Roberts, correct me if I'm wrong, if I'm misunderstanding you. There's part of it that's just a maintenance project, but maybe the difference is where that line is. Is that?
Correct, it sounds that way.
So, I mean, Mayor, maybe if we can get some clarity on that, then at least we know we can move forward with the 235th to 97. The rest of that will take longer if, or we go from Greenway to 97. Is, is kind of what I think I'm hearing tonight as the two options.
Other points of feedback on preference on footprint of the project?
Well, I mean, I can sure appreciate Councilmember Roberts' desire to see us begin to make headway on a trail system around the lake. I miss, my fear is that, that from Greenway to 235th is going to be such a heavy lift that I, it wouldn't get done for 10 years or 15 years. That's my concern.
That's my concern as well.
If we did the whole maintenance all the way to Greenway, or, yeah, to Greenway, and we get five, seven years out and we're like, okay, we're redoing from 61 and we want to explore putting in a trail system there. I mean, is it all sunk costs that we've done then? Or is there any value that we're going to be able to hold on to if we, if we were to continue a trail all the way to 235th?
You would have to go through private property acquisition.
And your whole drainage system for the road would change if you're putting a trail there versus just, versus not a trail, right? So, I mean, I think that would be maybe some sunk costs.
Some sunk costs and what makes me nervous about that is that has been part of the, the capstone art, the capstone factors that's really made this project so challenging is exactly that. Is it's the property acquisition, it's the drainage, it's all of those pieces. So, it's kind of like the same culprits keep coming back on this project that make it challenging. And so, if that's one of the things that would make that section challenging, I'm, I, I want us to make progress when we can make progress. And I feel like there's so many unknowns to make a larger project that I, I would argue strongly in, in favor of the biggest footprint that we can do. Um, and if that is Greenway to 97, I think that, that's a monumental win from where we've been over the last.
Yep.
How many years? It's, I mean, it's barely a howl-together roadway in some, some sections right now and, um, so.
All right, so what I'm hearing is a majority of the councils on board with Greenway to 97 as a maintenance project. And that's what Ryan should move forward with, developing plans and specs, the topography, public engagement, all of that stuff. Okay.
Getting something done.
Any other points of discussion? All right, thank you, Ryan. Christina, thank you for navigating us to some conclusions. Okay, our next agenda topic tonight in this workshops, um, workshop format is consideration of the DNR grant updates and potential changes. And Jamie, I think you're taking this one.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. So, I know this item has come before you a few times. We're here to talk about the Belts Park grant. In a recent conversation with the DNR requesting returning of grant funds, the city staff have, are, were informed of new information that we want to share with council tonight. Before I do that, I'm just going to do a quick recap just to kind of get everyone's minds fresh on where we've been. Um, and, and then we'll get, kind of get into the new information that we learned recently here. So, just as a reminder, November 27th, the city council meeting, you were presented with bid results for costs to construct a new pavilion and pave walkways throughout the park in addition to an inclusive playground with port and play surfacing. Those were the requirements per the grant that we submitted from the city for the DNR Outdoor Recreation Grant for Belts Park. There was a lot of variance in the bid estimates for the pavilion, so that was listed as an alternative bid. And the pavilion bids came in at a range from $400,000 to $1.5 million. So, that's just the pavilion estimate. So, there's a lot of variance there on what was being bid. The base bids came in at a range of about $357,000 to $700,000. So, that's just the paved pathways throughout the park without the pavilion. In addition, the inclusive playground and port and play surfacing was brought forward to the city council at the May 27th meeting, estimated at $450,000. At that time, at that council meeting, given the total project costs, some timing constraints and some implementation challenges, the council did decide to not accept the bids and not move forward with the purchase of the playground equipment at that time. Most recently, the council was presented with some more information at a workshop on March 20, or March 18th, where it was discussed to do something at Belts Park. Given the time and investments we've made into planning and something should be done there for the project. At that council workshop, with the information presented at the time, the council was favorable to the idea of the basketball tennis court reconstruction and some rehabilitation to the existing warming house structure. That was the, the feedback from council. At the request of council, the staff, you know, we spoke with the DNR to terminate the grant funds and per the language in our contract, the city really doesn't have an option for us to terminate it. Basically, the language in there states that if the state finds out that or is informed by the city that they haven't made sufficient progress on the grant or the grant will not be fulfilled as planned, they would terminate our contract. So, in a recent conversation and which brings us here tonight, having that. having that conversation with the DNR so we could bring something back to the council to formalize kind of that returning of grant dollars. The DNR has recognized the challenges that the cities that have received this funding have faced with inflation and just, you know, a lot of other things are seeing those communities that have completed their projects. They're far exceeding budget and having overruns and such. So, you know, this isn't a unique situation. The DNR really is trying to work with communities to allow them an opportunity to still make this work and keep the funds that they were awarded for their grant. And with that and that conversation, staff were informed that we were offered the opportunity to extend the grant an additional year, which would be December thirty-first of two thousand twenty-five. That's when the grant could potentially now expire. Additionally, in that conversation, we talked about the project scope. When we applied for the grant, staff working with consultants, we did include the pavilion as part of the grant application with the accessible equipment and port and place surfacing. With that pavilion included, our grant application was scored very high. So it was very strong grant application. Through this conversation, if the city would reduce our scope of the project to be the inclusive playground, port and place surfacing and accessible pathways throughout the park, that reduced scope would also be still very desirable to the DNR and scored very well. The DNR would welcome us to consider a grant amendment. It would be an amended grant contract. It would have to be approved by the National Park System. However, the DNR has informed me they would strongly encourage the DNR to approve such amended terms. And it is very likely that would go through. So there would have to be an amended process. Given that change of, you know, the extension for the grant and change of scope to really reduce that pavilion, removing that as part of our grant requirements. We wanted to share this information with council for discussion tonight. Um, I just, I'm just going to take a minute and talk about the fiscal impact if we would do this or have interest to explore this further. Currently, in two thousand twenty-four, the city has about, has nine hundred thousand dollars in planned park improvements. This is six hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the Belts courts and the building rehabilitation and two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for Fenway Fields improvements. At the end of two thousand twenty-three, the park dedication fund balance was at about one point four million. We also have a hundred thousand dollars in planned revenue for the two thousand twenty-four budget. So that all being said, if the city would move forward and complete all of the planned projects for this year, which is again a nine hundred thousand dollars, it is likely that we would, you know, be able to have the fund, the match for the, the playground project at Belts Park with the paved walkways. Just one more comment and it'll open up for discussion. So the new project scope for Belts Park, given this potential modification, is estimated at about eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And that's obviously something we would have to refine. These prices are from two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four to get us that number. So let's just say it's, you know, planned an estimated eight hundred and fifty thousand. The grant is three hundred thousand. That's an estimated amount of about five hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the city to complete that project. The Forest Lake Rotary has also made a contribution several years ago, which was towards inclusive playground. They wanted it to have, you know, a specific use towards inclusivity and in that playground. So those funds would also be available for this project. Lastly, you know, staff, when we did include the pavilion as part of the project, we talked about phasing and implementation. And with the pavilion as part of phase one, that really posed some challenges to accessing the upper portion of the park, which would be a future phased improvement for thirteen-plus equipment. However, after staff evaluation, without doing this pavilion now, you know, I feel like there will be an access for, for completing that as a future phase. You know, I think there, it is very viable that we could access that. We haven't vetted that through with engineering and all of the things, but it definitely is more realistic to consider that. I believe that's everything. Um, I guess the last fiscal impact portion of this. In closing, there would be the funds through two thousand twenty-five. However, this would impact, you know, two thousand twenty-six planned projects and beyond. So we would need to look at, you know, the approved capital plan, funding aligned with that and may need to make some modifications there for the two thousand twenty-six and beyond and/or identify some additional revenue opportunities, whether that would be bonding sooner or other tax levy-supported dollars for two thousand twenty-six, two thousand twenty-five or two thousand twenty-six. So for tonight's discussion, really the two questions, you know, would you like to, would the council like to explore this option further with reduced project scope being the inclusive playground, port and place surfacing and accessible paths in the park with an extended grant deadline through twenty, December thirty-first of two thousand twenty-five? Or would the council like us to continue terminating the grant contract with the state of Minnesota DNR? So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, you know, pretty high level of would you like staff to bring some more information back about this or continue with terminating?
Thank you, Jamie. And let's just open it up. Council, thoughts?
Just initial, one of the issues that's been, keeps coming up, have, do we have any agreement with St. Peters yet? As cross parking or an easement or where does that stand?
Yeah, we do not have an official agreement with them. Staff have had some more conversations internally to address the garbage can and the port, the portable restrooms, some of those concerns. I have reached out last Tuesday, have not received a call back yet, but I have emailed and called to connect with them on establishing that formal agreement. And I think at this point with the playground equipment, you know, that's obviously a very, parking is a very important part of that. So continuing to work on that with St. Peters. I think, you know, we certainly can, we've revisited those conversations and hope to connect with them when they call back.
Other questions, comments, thoughts?
Jamie, I think this information coming is, I think this is rather new information, right? That we've just recently had a conversation. So it seems that if we have an opportunity for a change in timeline and a change in scope, we should do some further evaluation. I think what would be helpful to help that next conversation is, and I, I can appreciate why this wasn't here tonight because tonight, tonight's question is, do you want us to continue with previous or do you want us to pivot? And I'd like to see us to, I'd like to see us pivot and then come back with again, what, what's happening when? And, and when we have that enough details on what those pivot points look like and what we're able to accommodate. I think I could, I would really benefit from just the defining specifically what the revised scope is. I know you just got this information and don't necessarily have a full plan, but I think seeing that would be helpful to help kind of connect the dots between Councilmember Roberts' points. We've heard feedback on parking. We've heard some other, you know, listed on the potential cons is, you know, might potentially impact timing on pickleball court and tennis courts. And I think validating that, vetting that is, you know, what are the conflict points if there are any? I think it'd be helpful, but I, I'm very open to us. I think we should explore those options, especially since we've had the, you know, Grace, you know, has been able to, you know, say, hey, we can, we'd like to work with you. And I think we should take them on that. I think it'd be foolish at this point to just return and reverse course.
Well, yeah, I mean, obviously it's something, there's, there's no effort on our part to try to terminate this thing. So let's make sure we're not doing that. But I'm glad we reached out and it's nice to hear that we're not the only community that had those overruns. And, you know, we might still have been a place to benefit from that. But I would, I would definitely want to see a parking agreement in place before we commit to much else as far as expanding the playground. I think that's, is a key, key piece of it. We've heard that from, you know, I mean, father himself, other community members. I mean, that's gotta, that's gotta happen. But I'm not opposed to, you know, seeking an extension and exploring that possibility of, of, you know, doing something with it. Because that is a significant investment in our community by the DNR. Rotary's been waiting for us to take action on their gift. So it'd be nice to see what, what's possible.
Is there, was the, refresh my memory, were we still able to move forward with the pickleball tennis court project this year? Would that still happen if, regardless of where we go?
We're getting bids, right? I don't know, Dave, if you have an update on when we expect them back?
Hopefully this week.
So hopefully this week, yeah.
And that was in the budget for two thousand twenty-four at six hundred and fifty thousand. So that would still be allocated for that.
So I think the six, if, my understanding is the six fifty was for belts overall.
Correct.
I would be shocked if the courts come in at the full six fifty. So I think there'd be some advantage to waiting until that's done and then we know really what the shortage is. Unless Dave thinks differently, but I'd be shocked if courts cost that much.
I, I think it's important to, to get that.
Do you think differently? Speak up.
I think it's a pretty good guess.
Wow.
Well, the court reconstruction, the, the maintenance project planned at Fenway for pickleball courts, I think, was significantly less. And I don't know if it's, this is a different scope.
It was like twenty thousand because it was like crack filling or something. But this would be redoing the courts. I did re-cords at two parks last year and only cost about four hundred thousand. So I would be shocked if it's six hundred here. Maybe things have gone up that much in a year.
So it sounds like we'll have that pricing, that those estimates in for that project to see if it's going to be the full six fifty or not. And then we can really put together a, a breakdown of what that could look like and the financial impact. Timing, parking agreement again is really important. And just wanted to see tonight if there's that desire to bring back more information or just continue with moving for, you know, going our ways and, and coming back at a different time. So I think, any other comments or questions?
This has been a project of many pivots and I think this is, we should, we need to pivot again.
It has been.
A little more information.
It would be real nice to get the, the courts done this year though. I mean, at least something to move forward on that part.
It sounds like we would expect to bring those back to you next month at the meeting.
Perfect.
Any other points of feedback on this? All right. Very good. Jamie, have what you need from us?
I do. Thank you.
Perfect. We, um, let's move into staff updates and Jolene.
No updates from the Clerk's Department this evening, Mayor.
Very good. Jamie?
No other updates other than just the spring fling coming up on Saturday, April twenty-seventh. So from one to four here at the city center, it's the same as last year. We'll be in the fire hall, weather permitting, outback as well. So if you can stop by or help spread the word. Thank you.
Thanks, Jamie. Abby?
Um, no significant updates, but I do want to thank you for passing the ordinance tonight, reformatting the zoning code. That is going to go a long way in us making some progress in improving our rules and regulations regarding land use. So thank you.
Thank you. Christina?
Um, just some scheduling updates. So we are not having the airport commission meeting in May. We decided to push that back till June. I know we've had a really busy April and I'm going to miss not seeing you guys now till May thirteenth, I think, is our next meeting with the fifth Tuesday this month. So please feel free to stop by or whatever. Enjoy your evenings.
Yes, all right. Amanda?
Yes, Your Honor. Two, two updates. First, just a quick note about cannabis. So the legislature this year is making a lot of modifications to the cannabis statute that was passed last year. Last count, there are about fifty, fifty-five pages of modifications. The last day of the session is May twentieth. So my, my plan right now is that probably at a work session or as a discussion item in June or July, I will go over sort of like I did a year and a half ago, or a year ago with, here's what you need to know about the law itself. And then we will start to get into what recommendations we would have for, staff would have for various ordinances. Particularly, we would be looking at things around zoning and licensing. The city cannot license these businesses, but you can register them. It's sort of a different word that means very, very similar. I'm not exactly the same, but very similar. So you can look for that, those updates coming. Secondarily, I spoke with Bart from DDA today. The city administrator position, uh, application period closes tomorrow. Counsel, you can expect some communication from Bart this week, probably Wednesday, updating you on how many total candidates they were, there were. Right now, we're at, I believe, thirty-six is what he said. He did mention to me that we have a tremendous amount of qualified candidates. So he will be going through all of the candidates and, and de-selecting anybody who doesn't meet our minimum criteria. He wanted me to warn you that what that means is that your semifinalist group is going to be pretty large because what he's seeing is frankly, the vast majority of these candidates do meet your criteria. So he said, make sure you're blocking out some time the, that week in May, the week before May thirteenth to be watching the video interviews and sort of analyzing the, the various candidates. But there will be more coming this week on that as well.
That meet.
Questions too.
That meeting on the thirteenth is a special meeting?
The meeting on the thirteenth is a spec, is a special meeting. It will be at four P M.
Correct.
Four to five thirty because we have E D A at five thirty. Confirmed with Bart today that he does not think it will take more than an hour, but we're doing it an hour, doing, you know, an hour and a half for a buffer. He will have instructions on sort of how he would like you to come prepared to that meeting to make sure that it, you know, we hit the ground running to go from semifinalist to finalist. The point of that meeting is to select the finalists. Semifinalists are private. There's no, you know, public data around who those applicants are. Finalists will become public data.
Perfect. And do we announce finalists at the end of that meeting? Is that part of, no?
No, we'll have, yeah, that, they have to say that they want to be a finalist for us.
Very good.
And, and then they'll be, so there'll be like a day or two, whatever delay.
Perfect. So Monday, May thirteenth, special meeting at four o'clock.
Yes.
Four to five thirty. Excellent. Thank you.
Unless, does that not work or anybody, please speak now if that's.
Problematic.
Okay, perfect. Yep, so the May thirteenth.
Excellent. Thank you. Dave?
Uh, just a couple of updates. Compost site will be open this weekend. The contractor to get the utilities through the site over the weekend. And they're doing some restoration work today and tomorrow. And then Public Works will go in there, they'll reset up the barriers and all that. So it will be open Saturday, the twenty-seventh. Contractor is coming in on Wednesday night into Thursday morning to re-strape Lakeside Park, repaint the yellow curbs and all the, the white painting. All of our pavement markings around the city, the dash lines and stuff, we're all in pretty good shape. So we're spending that money that we usually spend on painting the roads to paint that parking lot because it's getting to the point where you really can't even see parking stalls anymore. So as long as the weather holds, they get finicky about how cold it gets, so it may get pushed. But we'll be doing some message boards and talking with F L P D too, to let them know that we need to get vehicles out there. They plan on starting right around midnight. So if you hear about that. But hopefully that, that's, that stays and hopefully I'll be painted for the season.
Is that project only an over, one overnight and?
One overnight. They should be able to get it all done as long as all the cars are out of the way and we get a dumpster down there, we got to get out of there by then too. But it should be a few hours. They'll, they have a pretty big crew, so they'll probably have multiple people painting to get it out of there.
Excellent.
And that, that's all I have.
Thank you, Dave. Ryan?
No additional updates unless you have any questions.
Thank you, Ryan. And Kevin?
I'm Mayor and City Council. This reminder, at the May twentieth workshop, we will be discussing budget priorities. So please, if you can, send those to myself ahead of time so I can compile that list. So we have a good starting point for discussion. So I would request those by May tenth, which is the Friday before, so we can review those a little bit internally just to see where we want to go with those, so.
Very good. Thank you, Kevin. Bring it up to council for updates. Councilmember Roberts?
Yeah, thanks. I attended the Forest Lake Lake Association Annual Meeting that was at the Legion. It was very well attended. Great information. Since we are a partner there, I think that going forward, we should try to have some representation there. Councilman Erickson volunteered to say a few words and thanked everyone with the agreements we have with the other two entities. And so going forward, some kind of a formal, you know, presence there would be, would be nice.
Perfect. Councilmember Valento?
Just attended the Cable Commission meeting last week. It was a typical meeting reviewing budgets. We were looking at Paul's current and future projects, which is always exciting to look at and also discuss the future of the Cable Commission. And that's it.
Very good. Thank you, Hannah. Councilmember Husnick?
I have no updates tonight. Thanks.
Okay. And Councilmember Erickson?
No additional updates besides the Lake Association meeting.
Very good. Um, just a couple of quick updates. Many thanks to the Forest Lake Good Samaritans who spent some time over the weekend on, with many volunteer, dozens of volunteers doing park cleanup and, and just general public space cleanup around the city. There's, they just have, always have a tremendous turnout and especially on just a kind of a crummy weather day. And they made a, just a lot of great progress. So many thanks to Mike Kaiser and that entire group and all of the volunteers that made a difference in the park. And then again, just a big night tonight for the P D and that's always great to see. So congratulations to Captain Hanegraff, Sergeant Gladder, Sergeant. So congratulations to Captain Hanegraff, Sergeant Gladder, Sergeant Kent, and Officer Basil tonight. Always a great night. And thanks to Chief for the leadership in getting us to this point, so. That is the end of our planned agenda. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
No motion.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor signal by saying aye.